Twenty twelve. First, I'd like to welcome Solomon Goldstein Rose, who was elected the other night to the Amherst School Committee. Welcome, Solomon.
Thank you.
Good to have you here. And Zoe Langsdale, who is the representative from the Student Advisory Council. Is that the right name? Okay.
Thank you.
At the high school. So, good to have you too, Zoe.
Welcome.
The other thing we need tonight is that we work live on TV tonight from the library for the first time, so we're really happy that Jerry and his gang were able to get that hooked up. So hopefully, we can have meetings here from now on. We'll see how it goes tonight.
And we should thank Amherst Media with that as well.
Yes.
Because it was a collaboration between Amherst Media and the schools.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Agenda review. Any questions or comments on the agenda? Okay, moving on. Approval of minutes of January seventeenth and January twenty-fourth. Any comments, corrections on those?
Motion on both?
Sure.
Move on both, please. Except.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yep. Those are motion to approve both minutes. Who seconded? Catherine. Okay. Any discussion? Polls in favor? Opposed? All right. Minutes approved. Announcement, public comment. Is there anyone to make a public comment tonight?
Solomon's first row.
Any announcements from the committee? Yes, Kristin.
I don't know if Maria's going to mention this, but just to acknowledge that there's going to be an additional forum that the Schutzbury and Leverett School Committees are holding to discuss the change, potential change in time on February fifteenth. So, just another option.
And at seven o'clock in Schutzbury Elementary School?
Mm-hmm. At the library in Schutzbury.
Okay.
Schutzbury Elementary.
Great. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, superintendent's update.
Okay, great. Pass the, uh, Debbie Turner's one here.
Uh.
Okay. So first, I just, again, would like to say it's great to see that we have a new member, and it's great to have the student perspective represented. And Zoe, having a representative back is really important. We missed not having one for that period of time, so we're thrilled to have you here. And again, Solomon and Zoe, this is new, so if there are questions that you have, you can ask the chair for clarification as meetings go on, if you're not really sure how to, you know, to respond. So relying on the chair, he'll help you out. So I wanted to make a few announcements tonight. One, I'm not sure that I announced publicly prior. We've been working for a while on bringing Dr. Ron Ferguson to Amherst. And for people who are not aware of Dr. Ferguson's work, he's a lecturer in education and policy, public policy at Harvard Graduate School of Education and at the Harvard Kennedy School. And he is a nationally renowned educator whose research and writing is primarily focused on racial achievement gaps. And many of our staff have had the opportunity to see Dr. Ferguson speak over a number of years and have found his work to be really valuable, meaningful, and transferable to concrete action steps, which is critically important for us. So we will be having him come in March. We're still confirming the day, the date at this moment, but we're thinking of the last Wednesday in March. And we'll have an opportunity for Dr. Ferguson to meet with the leadership team, to meet with our partnership group, because the five colleges are supporting with other community members, supporting Dr. Ferguson coming, supporting financially, as well as offering opportunities for him to, places to speak and such. And then we will also have an opportunity for staff to hear Dr. Ferguson, and then an evening event as well, so open to the community. So we expect that that will be a free event, and we'd love to see students, staff, and community members join us. So exciting work. Also, again, just to mention that the MCN Student Conference will be coming, and I think we've confirmed the last week of September, I think is what we're working on at the moment, which will be Wednesday through Saturday for our students, but also for students in the MCN districts across the country to come and join us in Amherst. And again, the five colleges in the community are stepping up to partner with us to bring the students here. So we'll be having support from the local colleges and universities, use of space and such, to support us bringing this amazing opportunity to Amherst. We also are working closely with Amherst Education Foundation, who has provided a substantial amount of financial support to our, to our schools over the years in Leverett, Schutzbury, Pelham, and Amherst, and the regional schools. And we've, we've kind of started to work together probably over the past six months to think about how to kick off an alumni giving campaign. So Kim Stender's been working on updating the directory, which is an alumni directory that we were able to take care of, and also work with AEF to think about a kickoff in November, because that's when a lot of people come home for reunions. So we are hoping to have a musical event that we could ask alumni to come back and perform as a community kickoff, which would be a free event, but that would kick off the alumni giving efforts. So, again, hope to bring resources into our schools. Sixth grade has historically attended the High School Musical, and our sixth grade classes are coming to see Guys and Dolls on nine-thirty on Wednesday, February twenty-ninth, before public appearances happen. And I know in Pelham, we just mentioned that the sixth graders are very excited to come and see the performance. Zoe, are you in the performance?
Excellent.
Excellent. And we would strongly encourage school committee members to come and see the performance. And I will make sure that I am there myself with my, my daughter. Also, as Kristin mentioned, we have an upcoming forum for Leverett and Schutzbury, and open to other community members to attend to share their feedback. At this time, we have had three forums that have had sixty-eight parents, guardians, students, community members attend and provide their input, but also add questions and/or concerns. So we're in the process, over the next several days, to analyze that feedback and to consider next steps. In the meantime, and I think Mike might want to say something about this, in the meantime, if people have specific, if they weren't able to attend and they want to send something, they can send it in to Debbie Westmoreland, which is westmorelandd@arps.org, and she'll compile that additional information. So, did you want to share something too?
I have one additional item. I forgot to email you guys about the school committee.
Oh, please.
That we're having our, the MCN students came and presented to you about their action plans we've got on in the shadow day. So this coming Wednesday, we have twenty-sixth, sixth grade, seventh graders that are going to go shadow at the high school, and part of it's going to be experience a couple different things, but also have a conversation, as we've talked about, about kind of the things that happened in seventh grade and the way that affects, you know, affects their feeling in terms of what I wish I'd do then. So I just want to let you guys know, because you've heard that before, that that won't be happening. And thanks to Mary Custer at the high school, Tom Siqueg, the middle school, to more than get and identifying all those kids, and that will be happening.
Thanks, Mike. Two other things I just wanted to mention that to the committee, that we have a, we're presenting to the finance committee tomorrow night at eight o'clock, the Amherst and regional budgets. So if members want to come, you know, obviously, we would love to have you there. Rob and I will be there, but if there's an interest, I don't want, I know there's a lot of nights out this week, but including the four-town meeting on Saturday. But just so that people know, that is happening. We're slated for, we think, eight o'clock on Thursday. And there's also a BCG meeting tomorrow in Amherst, tomorrow morning at eight, eight o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
Any questions on the superintendent update? Okay, moving along. Fiscal year thirteen budget update.
Okay. So, Rob, you want to come up and, and help out with walking us through the new, our new understanding around budget support coming from the state, Chapter seventy? So Rob's going to walk us through where we are at the moment, because of course, as we anticipated, our assumption has shifted from assuming a two percent, Chapter seventy, funding from this, increase from the state. So he's going to talk, walk us through what that means, and how, at this point, I'm suggesting we close that additional gap. This conversation is happening with the three chairs, but we want to make sure the committee is, is kept up to date. Rob, Rob? Do you want mine? Here, I have extra. Right down there. Do you have enough? Do you have one for Zoe? Here. Send that one down. I have ex, I have my own.
Three more of these? Oh, yeah. We don't have any.
I know.
So these papers, okay, we'll have enough of it to go around. Okay, on this page forty-seven R, which is revised as of two-eight, in the corner, the change, you can reinsert this into your budget books, the change on this page reflects the change in Chapter seventy assumptions. When we started building the budget, we assumed the two percent increase in Chapter seventy. With the government budget coming out, the Chapter seventy increase is zero percent. Zero percent over the final Chapter seventy allotment for FY twelve. So you're going to look here and say, well, this level funded, how come it's going up forty-eight thousand? Okay? So we built our budget from FY twelve. We built it with the amount that you see here, in FY eleven. Yeah. Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Then, along comes the rule, and the state found they had extra money, that it made an extra allotment to municipalities, but also regional school districts. And so it was an increase in Chapter seventy for us of forty-eight thousand dollars. We'd already voted the budget. We had a budget, so rather than reopening the budget and increasing the budget, being whatever, we just took it as extra income. So two things happened. One, that extra income goes into E and D. We'll get that in a minute. We can use that for next year. And two, they say level funded, they're doing a level funded from the final Chapter seventy number in FY twelve. So effectively, for us, it's an increase of forty thousand. Okay, so with that, we still had a cut of one hundred and thirty-three thousand. And the question then becomes, well, how do you fund that? And the superintendent, you looked at it, and the options are, well, you can fund it from some other source, or you can do cuts in that amount, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, or some combination thereof. They didn't want to do cuts. So you look at all the funding sources. Funding sources you can play with are assessments of the towns.
Not an option.
Not, not an option. And so the other option is looking at using more E and D, which is what this presents. And you'll see in this version that the E and D budget support is now two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars instead of the five hundred thousand you saw in the original version of this budget. Okay? Any questions so far?
Rob, any for the new members and for the public? Could you explain what E and D is?
Oh, yes. Act of some deficiency in a regional school district is similar to free cash in a town. And what it is, I don't know how it got E and D as a moniker, but it's really the cash in a, in a general fund that is not earmarked for some other purpose. So other purposes would be things like encumbered expenses for the previous year, obligations for the next year. And what we have earmarked for use in the following year, so if you look at here, we would be using, in this case, six hundred thousand dollars for E and D for budget support, the two hundred eighty for emergency fund. So, so those earmarked things in the general fund are available for other purposes, which is how we, unreserved funds available for other purposes. How they got from that to E and D, I don't know. But that's what E and D is. Historically, in our region, the regional agreement called for a maximum of three and a half percent of the following year's budget could be carried forward as E and D. And once you go over that limit, three point five percent, any additional funds are to be used to reduce member towns' assessments the following year. Now, the rest of the state has a cap of five percent. Actually, when the state certifies E and D every year, that's what they certify against. So member towns have received certifications where E and D say, yeah, you're not close to the limit. And I just look at it and say, no, we're pretty close to the limit. Aren't we? It's different than everybody else's limit. So two years ago, two years ago, three, yeah, here we go, the, the regional district voted to increase the E and D cap for our district to five percent to be, I'm part with all the other districts in the state. So that's the brief history of E and D, and it is, it now works.
And also, the regional school district is a separate entity, so that's why it has an E and D, whereas the elementary school is part of the town, so it's really the towns' reserves. It is the reserves for the elementary schools and everything else in the town.
That's, that's a good point for now. The regional district legally is somewhat like a town. They're both governmental entities, distinct, separate entities.
So, okay, I, I would like to just jump in a little bit, too. So, you know, the, the conversation we've had to have is, do we, at this point, make additional cuts when we have added what we believe to be essential to support our priorities, our budget priorities? At this point, my recommendation, in speaking with the Budget Subcommittee, was I would like to ask that we apply that additional E and D this year. We can look at, in just a minute, is the history of school choice usage, what we've used in school choice versus what we've used in E and D. And as I explained, and Rob explained, at the four-town meeting, we have applied less school choice over the past most recent years. We used to apply much more, because we had more choice coming in. Next year, we anticipate going back up to the prior, or closer to the prior limit of what we were bringing in for choice funds, which is around seven hundred thousand dollars. So we saw a dip in the use of choice and an increase in E and D. So we are anticipating that swinging back next year. Again, when Rob will walk us through, one of the questions is how much I, E and D to use, and how much do you anticipate replenishing at the end of a school year, so that you keep it in a healthy place and not deplete? And you'll see the history of how Rob has worked very hard to, to make sure that we were being fiscally responsible to build up an E and D to a place that was solid, because it affects your bond rating and, and other issues. So this is taking a little bit of a dip back, but also the plan of replenishing this, at the end of this school year, and ideally, next year. So, so when you, what you won't see tonight is any additional cuts coming in front of you. You'll see the same papers with adds and cuts. Nothing has shifted in that document from our last meeting.
Okay, so on the colorful page, you see the history of E and D, and it's, it's the same as what you have in your book, updated, to reflect using six hundred and thirty-three thousand for the next use budget support, around the five hundred thousand. And I opened it up a little bit at the top, and before I go into next year and the following year, just I want to review what's happened in the past. So in the previous years, the lines that are green and below are years that have been certified by the state as, yes, that is what our E and D is. And you can see that what the percentage calculation is, is the amount at the end of fiscal ten, say, is what percentage of the total budget for FY eleven, including the operating budget and the capital budget. So remind those two, what percentage of that is this E and D certified at? So you can see that going back to two thousand and two, we had a pretty low reserve, at one percent. And by two thousand and six, we are up to three point four. And at that point, we're living under a three point five cap. As we lifted the cap, we've been raising E and D as we could to get it up to a healthier level for bitter times such as these. What I've, what I've done in this version is shown what I expect to happen to E and D overall. So if during FY twelve, at the end of FY twelve, we're able to return three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of unextended funds for this year's budget, E and D, that will raise it. And then if we apply six hundred and thirty-three thousand for next year's budget, we reduce it. And so we're looking at potentially, at E and D, at three point eight-five percent for FY twelve, E and FY twelve, rather than, you know, eight, four point four percent. Now, why the three fifty is, I'll remind you where that comes from. And the three hundred of that is from unextended, out-of-district places for special education that are identified this year as, you don't need it, maybe cut it for next year's budget, and you have that conversation. And then fifteen thousand is other sort of things. So we usually have something that goes back to E and D. Why? Because while we try to budget right on target, things happen during the year, and one thing we cannot do is spend more than we have in the budget. And so since it's virtually impossible, we committed exactly zero, given the margin of safety, we don't invariably have a little bit left over to do the cushion that goes back to E and D. So that's the history and the projection for E and D. If you look forward to FY fourteen, if at the end of FY, FY thirteen, we have fifty thousand going back in, and use three hundred thousand, we'd have six thirty-three, down to three hundred thousand in E and D. That's still going to deplete E and D a bit, down to two point nine-six, but hopefully that will buy us this transition period, this bridge period, for choice to come in alone. So let's look at the choice piece. And so the second section is, oh, this is the choice.
Rob, I'm sorry. Can I just understand this E and D? Because, so when I think of, when I think of E and D, I sort of think of a, a fund balance. But it's sounding to me like what you're saying, if we look at that E and D number at, as of six thirty-two thousand and eleven, the one point four million.
Yep.
That that has already, what's already been taken out of that one point four million is what we budgeted for E and D in FY twelve, which is?
Yes.
Eight hundred and thirty thousand.
It was two, four hundred and fifty thousand.
Plus the two eighty for contingency.
The two eighty for contingency technically goes in during the year, goes back out during the year, because it's a, it's a fixed, it's a fixed reserve for the thinking of it. So it really doesn't affect E and D either way. It's a constant placeholder. Okay, so, so on June thirtieth, it goes in E and D, and July first, it goes back out as part of this budget.
Okay, but the, but on June thirtieth, the E and D for budget support comes out, the E and D for budget support for the next year comes out on June thirtieth, as opposed to July one?
Well, the E and D for budget support is spent along the way.
Right, but I, I'm trying to understand why in the E and D, your estimate of E and D at six thirty-two thousand and twelve, you're subtracting out what we're putting, potentially putting in the FY thirteen budget.
Right. So that's just the E and D for budget support line.
Right.
You don't see the eight, two eighty going back and forth.
Right, I, okay, I am, that's what I'm talking about, the budget support.
Yeah.
So at six thirty-two thousand and eleven, we took out the E and D for budget support for FY twelve. We took it out on six thirty. We don't take it, we, we actually take it out of that balance on six thirty.
The six, no, the six thirty doesn't come out at six thirty, well, eleven, it comes out of the E and D at six thirty-four.
Right, so, okay, I'm sorry, though, that's why I'm really confused by why you're subtracting out this six hundred and thirty-three thousand before you come up to your estimate of the balance at six thirty-two thousand and twelve, because the six thirty-three is an FY thirteen number.
Yes, that's right. So, okay, so we're now in FY twelve, and by the time we get to the end of FY twelve, what the E and D balance at the end of last year was will have been increased by the three hundred and fifty, but we also have reserved six hundred and thirty-three thousand in E and D for the fiscal thirteen budget. So if we count that E and D at the end of FY twelve year.
Even though, so that certified E and D balance isn't really a fund balance, then, because you're subtracting out your next year's budget amount?
Yeah, this is, E and D is just the unencumbered, unreserved part of the fund balance.
Okay.
The rest of the fund balance is things that are encumbered for prior expenses, or reserved for budget support for the next year, or that sort of thing. And we will be meeting in the next week or two to look at the argument of financials for FY eleven, and we're going to go through all those, piece by piece, as to what's in the fund balance and E and D.
The one thing I'd like to, before we go into choice, the one thing, too, I want to let the committee know that I've, I've committed to with Rob, that as we're looking toward the end of the year, obviously, we've been very fiscally responsible with spending, clearly. However, my commitment will be, over the next few years, to be committed to putting additional funds, whatever is there at the end of the year, back into E and D to keep that fund replenished. So the fifty thousand dollars, you know, projected for, to be entering back into E and D at the end of FY thirteen is, is conservative, and, you know, I would hope that, that, that number would increase. But again, you know, there's no guarantee, but that is the commitment that I've made to, to be very conscious of putting funds back in, because knowing that we are taking a bit of a dip, and we want to make sure that we're replenishing for the future.
Can I move on to the choice piece?
Please.
Okay. So the second section shows you the history of our choice revenue and expenditures from that revolving fund. So what is choice? So we have some choice, some slots available for, gives you a choice into our district for education, and those from the high school. And anybody can apply for slots that we, oh, have open. And what happens is that the sending district, whether they come from, whether they're adults now or have, you know, wherever, ends up reimbursing us for five thousand dollars per student to hear for a full year. So you look at students, FTEs, if they're here for a full year, it's one FTE, you get five thousand dollars. If you're here for half a year, or half a FTE, you get three thousand dollars. Plus, if they have special ed needs, those costs for the life special ed services are fully reimbursed by the sending district as well. So it's two streams. And put those together, that brings revenue into our district, and we put it into our revolving fund. And at revolving fund, we use some of those funds to support the following year budget. So what you'll see here is, for instance, in FY ten, we brought in four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in revenue, and we spent six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that fund to support the budget there. So the fund balance went down to one hundred and thirteen thousand, going into the year with five hundred thousand in that fund. Skipping ahead, FY twelve, we're projecting to bring in four hundred and eighty-seven thousand based on the allowances we had as of December. And we have budgeted to use three hundred thousand in that fund for this year's budget. So we should end this year with a balance of four hundred and seventy thousand. Now, we're opening additional slots next year, and we are projecting, bringing in up to seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. But you'll see that we're spending four hundred and seven, which is how much we had left at the end of this year. If that was the fund balance, we're going to take that and plunk it down to support next year's budget. Next year, we bring in seven hundred and seventeen. We end the year with a fund balance of seven hundred and seventeen. And low behold, in FY fourteen, we plan on plunking it down to four hundred and seventeen for life special ed. So as Maria alluded to earlier, you go back to FY oh-five, we were drawing down nine hundred thousand dollars from that fund, and I feel... that fund, and I feel that more choice gets coming in. Now we dip down, and now it's going back up. And for our new members, I would point out that, the reason we do it this way is because we want to have the money in the fund before we spend it the following year. Because this is after all, choice. And so we think the choice gets are coming. We don't know until they actually walk in the door. They could, they could never choice over the summer, right? So to be cautious, we just roll it that way, oh, it's one year. Okay, so putting those two pieces together, if you look at the bottom section, FY12, we're using $300,000 from choice and $450,000 from E and D, or total budget support from the two sources together, $750,000. And if it fails, we just looked at, we're not projecting using the $470,000 from choice as we have, and now $633,000 from E and D for 1.1 million of budget support for FY13 from these two sources. And then you can see what Maria was talking about earlier, in FY14, it switches. Choice goes up to 717, E and D goes down to 300. It's about the same level of budget support from these sources, but the amount for each is switched. Now we're not creating E and D as fast as we want. And after that, you can look to replenishing the E and D and getting stable.
Yep. That was very helpful, for me anyway, for the committee to see it run, run through.
So it does dip us down a bit, but it gets us to what it's curious, and see how it will play out.
Enough I could say to the committee, too, that, especially for the new members, we've, you know, my statements to the four towns, and it's a similar statement that I'm making to Amherst, around the Amherst budget, we really need a year of stability to do some of our internal work, to make sure that we are putting in place interventions, we're looking at aligning our curriculum, focusing on differentiation, looking at the use of time and such in our schools, so that we need a year to be able to see what the budget picture, looks like in the future. So for right now, that's, the goal is to have a level of stability without significant cuts. So this is where this gap being filled with E and D allows us to have that for a year.
I have a request, I'm not sure if you can answer this. The Chair of Leverett and myself would like to request that there be a review of the enrollment figures for the four towns. In our opinion, the 3% seems to be a tad high for increasing.
So how, how is the budget rolling average?
If you could take another look at that and get back to us before the 28th, I'd be appreciative. Thank you.
Debbie?
Not a question, but a comment. So I, in looking back over the years, at least the past four or five years, it seems to me that we're pretty conservative about budgeting, about our expenditure budgets. And in fact, since 2006, 30, 2008, rather than using E and D, we've actually been adding to E and D each year since then. And, you know, that's, that's not a bad thing. I think it's good to be conservative in our expenditure budgets. But I guess for me, it's one of the reasons I'm not as concerned about this for this year, using this amount, because I do think we're conservative. I suspect we will not use that much of E and D, but it will help us to continue maintaining healthy programs for this year. Now, obviously, if at the end of the year, it turns out, for some bizarre reason, Rob wasn't ultra conservative this year, and, you know, we will have to reevaluate. But, but I think that, at least looking at the recent past, that's seemed to be the case.
I mean, in full disclosure, I'll accept conservative, but not ultra conservative. Because while we haven't been conservative, and that's a prudent way of looking at it, we've also been very lucky. And we've been lucky with a couple breaks along the way, including head jobs dropping on us, which was a nice piece of money for a couple of years, that really isn't part of our ongoing regular mix. It just fell on us and we took it and we worked with it. And the other piece that we talked about recently is, we've really been able to bring special ed services in-house, and I've been able to, like, pare down the last few years, how much we have to spend out of district. So, you know, that's like a one-time shift, and hopefully it stays here, it doesn't go back up the other way. But that's not really conservative budgeting, that's part luck, part good clinical management. So there's those factors as well. I can't possibly give credit where it's due.
Okay, if nothing else, we're moving on to the four towns meeting discussion.
Thank you, Rob. So, would you like me to start?
Sure.
So the four towns meeting is Saturday from 8:30 to 10:30. Rob will, and will be putting together packets of this updated information for the four towns to review and, you know, be kept up to date with our current situation. And, you know, it would be helpful to hear from the committee if there are other things, such as enrollments, that would be helpful for people to have, for your committee's consideration for Saturday. We also, really, I think it's just, it's a time to check in, to see how people are, you know, looking at budget needs, because we recognize that this is a challenge for some of our communities more than others, to reach this level of, of support for our schools. So I think, for me, it would be very helpful, if there are points that you'd like us to consider and address on Saturday, would be helpful to hear, or if there's anything that you know that you'd like to, that your communities have asked to share in advance. And then I don't know if there are other points that the committee themselves wanted to address on this topic. Anything else, Kip? Okay. Also, could I, I also wanted to mention just kind of an update for those who were at the last four-town meeting. One of the conversations we had, which was raised from Leverett, was to look at some of the unfunded mandates for the schools, and the implication of having the state not fully fund aspects of our, our school requirements. So we did have that follow-up conversation where Kip Fontch and Farshid Hager and Peter Derico came and met with our staff, and we started to compile what, what these unfunded mandates are, and to consider, you know, the possibility of looking at ways to either take some action, to consider if there's a way to reduce some of the, maybe increase the revenue for some of these factors that affect our schools. So we are pulling this information together that we will be sharing, and as we get closer to, if we're going to take any action at the state level to bring up these topics, we'll bring them to the committee. But we just wanted to let you know that we have taken that, that step to start exploring. And, Rob, can I also say, another budget update, did we just get notification that for this year, there's a, the state is reimbursing for McKinney-Vento transportation? Can you tell me what that is? Because I knew there was one other piece.
I could bring that with me, but
I'm sorry.
Some other districts have been applying mandates too. And one of the ones that pops up in our conversation, our conversation, is the requirement to transport McKinney-Vento students. So that is, students who are homeless or displaced, living in, have had to move to different community, but really should continue their schooling where they've been, right? And so the provision of the law that the two residence areas, two towns, whatever it is, share the cost of transporting kids to their home school, if you will, even if they don't live in that town anymore. It was the cost of all the transport, so that's called McKinney-Vento compensation cost. So some of these little towns went to, pretty shallow, I think?
I think it, I can't, was it the auditor, state auditor?
State auditor's office, yes. He said, you know, "Look, we're incurring these large expenses, these towns are incurring over $4 million, $200,000. It's an unfunded mandate, either you all need to help us pay for this, or we shouldn't have to do it." And the state auditor found in their favor, and is sending a piece of action to the Department of Education and to legislation. The calculation that the auditor did was that the total amount was 11 million?
Yeah, I think that's what it was.
About 11 million statewide, the funded cost incurred by school districts. And they've done a little calculation as to how much the total district, and in, I don't know how they get these numbers, but I think it would be that Amherst would receive something like $5,000, and the region would get $10,000, that was what it was, through help.
Right.
But I really don't know how they got those numbers, so I couldn't bank it just yet, even if it had gotten funded. But right now, it's just a proposal from the auditor and the state saying that we should be funded. So stick to them, and see what happens.
Rob, do we have a line item in our budget where we know what our actual cost is for that item?
Yes.
And do you know, generally?
I can, I can look it up.
$2,000.
Okay. You don't have to do that right now.
Okay, but I can, yeah, thanks.
Did it transportation?
I think it's on
There's a separate paragraph in the document.
There is, and it, and it talks about the current, and I think there's a graph also of the number of students we're currently serving.
Yeah, student services.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Rob, because I knew I wasn't getting that correct.
Rob, so I just, I'm actually taking it back to lunch. I just want to see if I can get the take-home message here correct, and I'm worried I didn't. So is it that, so the vision of how we're seeing the funding happening in the future is that we're drawing down E and D, and we're relying more heavily on school choice funds over time? Is that?
Well, we're going, we're going to draw down E and D for a year or two.
And then bring it back up?
So we get the revenue coming in from choice, and then choice revenue will go up, and E and D revenue will go down, so.
So the choice money is going to end up supporting and, supporting the E and D fund, not necessarily the operating budget?
Well, it's the same thing, because this is how we draw E and D to support the operating budget, we draw from the choice revenue to support the operating budget. So if you look, so if you look at the bottom, so the total budget support on the right, FY12, $7,000, FY13, $1.1 million, but it's only 470 from choice and 633 from E and D. The next year, still about the same total budget support of $1 million, but now, choice revenue is 717, E and D is only 300. So it goes back, we're drawing it down at a much lower rate, similar to what we did in FY10 and FY11. So we're just drawing more heavily for a couple of years to get us to the place where that choice revenue increases again.
And the assumption is that the choice revenue will stay
Yeah.
solid, right? Is there any concern about that, I guess?
Well, since it's choice, you always have to wonder. On the other hand, we've never had unfilled choice slots, because one will come here.
In our history.
Historically, maybe that's happened with, with Leverett.
Yes. I'm feeling fairly confident that we'll see, absolutely.
Thanks.
Rob, one question too, that, is there any, are there any rules about what your revolving fund for choice has to stay at, like, based on number of students, or is it our rules of the state?
Choice, we, we have a lot of good.
Can I ask one more budget piece before we move on? Kip, did you, I'm remembering from our meeting the other day, did you want to talk about letter writing to the state around increasing Chapter 70? Did we talk about that, and am I?
Yeah, we, we talked about writing letters to Kulik, Rosenberg, regarding reexamining the legislature's, or the, excuse me, the governor's decision to allocate money for those schools which appear to be increasing enrollment, moving into the foundation amount as opposed to places like the region that are having declining enrollment. I personally wrote a letter to Kulik, and his response was that the, he understands the inequity of it, he doesn't, but he doesn't understand the rationale behind it, and that there are also other legislators from those towns that are similar to ours, that did not get any money at all, that are very upset about this. So I don't think we've heard the last word about it, but it would help if there could be some letters written to, to the various legislators in regards to taking another look at that decision.
And do you think that's more powerful coming from the committee as a whole, or individuals, or?
I'll, I'll, until the committee decides that.
I'd personally be very much in favor of that, but.
Maybe send it to those, those different committees, the county manager.
Yeah.
If we do it, I would suggest that we write it, local representatives, but also to the Senate and House leaders as well, and maybe even the education committees of both, of both houses.
Would you be willing to draft that, or we could look at it next meeting?
Why are you saying that with a smirk on your face?
Because you kind of did already, right?
Yes, I, if I have a trick, I guess I will.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah.
We may also want to hit the House Ways and Means Committee, you know, folks in their budget decisions.
Thank you. Thank you, Kip.
Yeah, thank you.
I should have come here first.
Ask another question, back to this budget. So it, I mean, things are still really changing on the revenue side.
Right.
So I guess my question is, what happens if Chapter 70 doesn't even, you know, what if there's a cut to Chapter 70? I mean, are we, are we, are we thinking this is sort of the maximum drawdown, in which case, if that comes, that occurs, we're going to have to look elsewhere? Or, I'm just curious what you're thinking about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that when we looked at the, you know, the information that we have at this time, we're feeling fairly as confident as we can be that this is a reasonable projection with, you know, zero but no further cut. However, if we have an additional decrease in funding, we're going to have to come back to the table, and I'm not sure at that point I would ask us to go any deeper into E and D. So then we, then it's a whole other conversation.
One other thing, I'm sure it's affected some of the other towns as well, is that we didn't get any increase in Leverett. So one of the reasons why we feel so much pressure to $71,000 increase, which is still looking kind of difficult.
Right, I know.
That, that sort of complicated the position.
Right.
Because we were counting on that well, as well, for the elementary.
Yeah.
And so this is, because we didn't get that, this becomes an even more onerous hit, not on the region, but on the elementary level.
Yes.
So it's still
Absolutely.
an issue for us.
Yes, it is. And it's a hard balance to have to, to look at both.
Very hard.
I, I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, driving to do that.
Okay, so let's see most of you at the four towns meetings. So school calendar for '12, '13.
Okay. So Debbie's actually going to talk to us a little bit about the process of looking at the school calendar, and what you have in front of you, and make note, this is our first, it's a very much a draft. Our process typically, you know, we'll bring this in front of the committee, we'll, we have two options. We then go to the APEA and ask for their feedback as well, before we come back with a final recommendation for the committee. But I'd love to have Debbie just kind of walk you through what you're seeing in front of you.
Basically, what you have in front of you is a pre-Labor Day calendar draft and a post-Labor Day calendar draft, which is what we always typically present to APEA for their consideration. So far, the only folks who have really vetted this, the principals had a look at it today, the district directors have had a look at it. We don't know yet, you know,
We don't know yet, you know, which one A P A may prefer, but this will be going out to them within the next, probably, I would think, the next couple of days.
Exactly.
But what we have done, we have to schedule one hundred and eighty days with students and one hundred and eighty-four days for teachers. And as you probably recall, during this current year, for the first time, the decision was made to have two of the curriculum days up front, which resulted in a staggered ending of this school year with the elementary schools ending a day earlier than the regional schools. The principals and directors agreed today that we will have just one of the curriculum days up front for FY thirteen, which means we'll have the same end date for the school year. But basically, what you're looking at, if one of these was approved as written, if we approved the pre-Labor Day start, students would be back to school on August thirtieth. That would be for all students other than kindergarten. Kindergarten students would start two school days later, which would be September fourth, the day after Labor Day. If we approve a post-Labor Day start, students would begin on September fourth, the day after Labor Day, and kindergarten students would start two days later on the sixth. The draw, one of the drawbacks to the post-Labor Day start is it would put us fairly late into June if we didn't use any of our snow days. The earliest day we would get out would be June eighteenth. Potentially, if we used our five, we would be at June twenty-fifth, which is sort of the situation we're in this year. The ending dates look much better on the pre-Labor Day start, June fourteenth, the earliest possible last day of school, June twenty-first, if we use our five snow days. One of the issues that will be discussed about the pre-Labor Day start is the way it makes the first trimester end for students. It would be ending right before the Thanksgiving holiday, which would be great for students, but it's a little difficult for teachers because they would come back to school and immediately be getting grades out and starting the new trimester. And I think the only other thing to draw your attention to in the draft, because we have, I believe it's two of the elementary schools, not all three, that are polling sites. Because this is a presidential election year, there's always concerns with elections about people coming into the building, having access to the building who are not prior ed. So the, the principals have recommended that the elementary teacher's workday be scheduled on Election Day. That way, students aren't in the building, they can be used for polling, teachers can still be in there working. It's just different from what families are used to because traditionally, our workdays are on either Monday or Friday, so that students have a long weekend. It would be on a Tuesday this time.
I just want to clarify, there are three titles for some of these days. There's curriculum, there's professional development, and there's workday.
That's just my error when I was saying this together, because.
It's all the same.
We sort of use them interchangeably, professional day and curriculum day.
However, workday is teacher work time to transition from trimester or half-year, you know, for elementary students.
And in terms of your goals, which, if any, of those days will be devoted to teachers working in teams or what have you, to, towards those goals?
The two curriculum days, or PD days, depending on how they are, yes. In addition to other times that have been scheduled within our, our workday. Again, that's a priority to make that time for teachers for their own development.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Debbie, then.
Rob?
So first, just to comment and then a question. I think starting two days before Labor Day, I just, I've never felt that to be a good idea, to have a couple of days of school and then break for Labor Day. It just, it seems to me that those two days aren't as effective as they could be if we started the day after Labor Day, and that's just my personal opinion about it. I don't think those two days, those extra two days at the end of June, it's still the end of June, you know, the twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, it's, I don't, I don't see that that makes that much of a difference. My question is about Good Friday, and probably I've seen this before, but I've never really registered that there's no school due to budgetary constraints.
We, we have so many staff who take that as a holiday that sub, getting enough subs for, to sub, to fill the buildings is an issue. And we made this decision, I want to say, three years ago, two years ago? Mark is saying two. Is it P's or is it three? So it was three years ago, he's telling me P's, yes, it's three. All right. A few years ago, we made this decision because it was so challenging, it was such, it was a lost day, and it was, the cost was absorbent, absorbent, and, and we just couldn't get enough subs.
So, I'm sorry, Rick, can I just respond? So, so it's a little bit misleading to say due to budgetary constraints, because it makes it sound like if we just threw money at the problem, it wouldn't be a problem. But it sounds like it's, it's a bigger problem than the cost of the substitutes, it's not being able to find substitutes, it's the students' absences.
There was a deliberate thought around this at the time.
And I, I can tell you the history, and to be honest, what happens, I pull up my draft from previous years, and I use that and plug things in. The first year we did this, it was truly a budgetary constraint, it was when we were making massive, massive cuts, and because of the number of subs you have to bring in, in addition to not being able to find enough subs, you have to bring in so many that it is rather costly. So it really was budgetary, but that should actually probably come out at this time.
And I also think it was important to, to say that we're not choosing a religious holiday because the fact that it's a, there's another factor that's requiring us to, excuse me, have the day off.
Yeah. One question, so on this proposed calendar, the teacher, elementary teacher's workday in November, was that the one that was typically in January? Because there has been recently, the last couple of years, a teacher workday in January.
The teacher workday, I think, is February now. Isn't that the one that would be the typical?
February first.
Yeah, the one in November is the Election Day.
And then my other question, Debbie, is I'm missing a day when I compare last year to this year. So last year, we started, this current year, we started on the sixth of September. It's a leap year, so that gives you one extra day. But, and then the high school students ended earliest possible on the eighteenth, which is the same as the proposed calendar. We're starting on the fourth in this proposed calendar, earliest is the eighteenth. Where am I missing a day, the, the post-Labor Day? So where am I missing a day in there?
Yes, we had an extra day in December vacation this year because New Year's Day fell on the weekend.
That's right.
And so we had to come back on the third instead of the second.
Right, because Monday is the last day.
And this, for some reason, the holiday, the December holidays just fall beautifully this year, twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth in one week. But just for full disclosure, because this is still a draft, I'll have probably twenty other people count and recount to make sure I've got the right number of days, because after counting it several times, it's urgent.
No, my question wasn't really that you missed a day.
No, no, no.
I was wondering if it had to do with changing the workdays, but the elementary students are the ones who change the workday, not the region, correct?
Right. And this year, the elementary teachers did have two of their workdays.
Up front.
Or professional development days up front before school started, and they are moving one back into the school year. So that's another factor.
So, I was just going to respond to the idea of that starting on Thursday before Labor Day, and I, that's, that's how we've always done it until this year, I feel like, is start, it's sometimes been right before Labor Day and sometimes not, but starting on a Thursday, I think, I don't know if this is necessarily representative of most students, but I feel like it might be a good idea because we're coming from summer, and then you go back to school for just two days, ease into it, and then have a long weekend again.
It's like a transition period, because you don't want to go to school like the first day and have lots of homework and like lots of work, and you're kind of like, oh my gosh, yesterday was summer, so it's kind of a nice.
Transition.
Yeah.
I've heard the same from people as well.
So I'd say that that might actually be positive. And as to the exams being right before Thanksgiving, how were they this year?
They were after, I think there was a week after.
The week after Thanksgiving. So that's how it would be if we started after Labor Day. That might be something to see if we can ask the school students their preference.
I mean, I know, I personally kind of like having exams before, because it's like you review a lot in class before, and I feel like having the long weekend kind of, you get even more stressed out about it.
Right.
At least, I know I did this year.
Yeah.
So I think it kind of helps to like get it all done the week before and then not have to worry about it a bit, because people go away also, and then it's hard to come back and have exams.
I could see that being a problem, then teachers have to grade exams over Thanksgiving break, though.
Yeah, that's the problem.
So that'd be something else the teachers have to.
Thank you, and we're going to have to look at all of that, and I know it'll go back to the high school now, so Mr. Jackson will be taking a look at that with, with his team. Also, I just wanted to mention, can I? For Leverton and Shootsberry, you know, Pelham's on our same schedule, but for Leverton and Shootsberry, we did reach out just to say, just try to see when curriculum days were happening, and is there any way to coordinate so that we can do some cooperative, collaborative work?
We started talking about that.
Right. So we're, you know, trying to open the door there as well. So this will be back in front of you again.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, policy subcommittee update.
Let me do the update, obviously, first, to give you a sense of where we're heading and what we might be able to bring to you in the next month or two. I'm hopeful that we will have a buses idling policy, if that's the right grammatical way to say it, before you, maybe not in February, but certainly by March, I think we'll have that. We're also looking at class size guidelines, and perhaps most significantly, and most, as most bearing in recent discussions, we have invited the athletic director, Mr. Farrow, to join us on Monday, which is our next policy subcommittee meeting, to have a conversation with us about his views on advertising and sponsorship. So I don't think we'll have a proposal for you for a while, but we are starting to look at that. Yes?
I also wanted to mention that I met with some parents today regarding class size and gave some input into some language change, you know, what would be considered, what is a target versus, you know, what is the, the cap? So I would love to come and be able to share that information with the subcommittee when you're, you're talking about.
When we have guests before, the guests have taken up our entire meeting, so.
I will be very quick.
Well, no, no, no.
I'll take email.
Why don't you wait until we come to get you?
Please, please do. Oh, that's great. So come let me know when you want me to be there, because I'd love to share that.
I'm not sure we will make it on Monday. That's a new joke.
Yeah, I was at this meeting as well, and I think the three terms were target, cap, and maximum.
And defining what we mean by that, and.
If you have anything along, email it to me and I'll be at the meeting. I'm sorry, Rob.
Well, I guess I was just going to say, I think it's great, and I love a lot of things for the subcommittee structure, particularly with these two issues, the class size guidelines and the sponsorship of schools. I'm hoping that we can have kind of a full committee discussion on this before a policy comes to us for like a first reading or anything like that. I kind of think these are one, some of the ones that should be discussed in committee first, then go to policy for like writing and tweaking, and then come back as a reading, so.
I think the committee, subcommittee would actually prefer to work on it a little bit, because we're a smaller group, bring something to you, not for a first reading, but just to respond to and have it evolve kind of organically, if you will. But I don't think our intention would be to bring something to you immediately for a first reading, for something that potentially controversial, that wouldn't be appropriate.
Right, but then I guess, just in response, what I'm looking forward to is a full committee discussion where the superintendent presents some data and information about class size guidelines, and we have a discussion about that long before we get a policy written or changed.
Amherst, we have, we have placed it on the agenda for our next Amherst meeting for that level, because we are going to, I'll bring information, and we can start to, to weigh in, and I can share that information. I don't remember when your next meeting is, but, but we can, we can do that. I also have another, just an update on one consideration for some revisions.
Well, was there a question?
Well, I was just going to, so I understand the preference of wanting to do it in a smaller group and bring something, some touch around it. Well, part of, but then I also agree that this is a full committee discussion, or I'd like it to be. But will you bring some research or some of the research you've done around it at that time?
Well, as I was going to note, a researcher usually handles those responsibilities, and she's not here this evening, but since we're live, I was going to give her a heads up and lots of loving over this videotape, but I'm sure Elaine would be able to do that.
Okay, thank you, great, thanks.
Well, just one other thing on where we're going, we're also, after we've finished, well, not finished, but after we look at their next items, are Section A and Section C, so that should keep us busy for a while. What you have, what you have in front of you, I mentioned Elaine, she was kind enough and on top of things enough, so that she's able to provide you with a synopsis, if you will, a brief commentary on each of the policies that you have before you. You notice, most of these are changes relative to laws. The other thing I would bring to your attention, and what we're basically concentrating on is, are those policies that the last time they were looked at was perhaps before some of you were born? So that's, that's sort of what we're looking at in terms of Sections A and C. Quite a few is in the early, mid-eighties.
Yeah.
But that's, I think, I, I wish I could add more to the comments that Elaine has provided with you, but I think she's done a really excellent job of covering all the points, so, but I'll be happy to answer any questions she has.
So Policy AC is first, and this is a first reading on this one, right?
Yes, on, actually, on all of them.
On all of them, okay. Any questions on Policy AC?
Yes, on detailed points?
Sure.
But there's a period after the first few words that should be a comma.
Yep. Thank you for pointing that out, Sam.
You're welcome. That's it.
Any other comments on Policy AC? AC, Policy AC is commitment to nondiscrimination in educational equity. Okay, if no questions on that, we'll move on to the next one, which is Policy ACB, affirmative action on cultural diversity. Any comments here, Sam?
And Point Two, and a staff which includes individuals from historically marginalized groups, I wondered about saying something about currently marginalized groups are kind of including, I don't know, not, not just focusing on history, but what is actually the situation now in some form?
Any other comments on ACB?
I'm just sort of struck by how long it's been since this has been updated. It's a long time.
I know, I'm plugging through these.
One point about that, if I may.
Please.
And I did point out that in the past, if they've been looked at and there weren't changes, they didn't change the date at the bottom, because there was no vote on them. So some of them have been looked at, just not changed.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Nick.
So to follow up on that, what we're planning on doing is, if we don't make any changes, to add that the policy was reviewed in twenty-twelve.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so if nothing else on ACB, moving on to BDFAs, school councils. Any questions on this? Yes, Sam?
Point A, the council shouldn't include, et cetera, and for the high school, at least one student representative, could we state clearly that it's a possibility, if it is meant to be a possibility, to have a student representative on any of the other councils? Is that? Is that meant to be a possibility?
When, when you're talking about councils from, this, this policy covers the region, AMERSS, and Pelham, is that what you're referring to?
It's one council, which is a specific council. It's the school council that works with the, provides an advisory to the principal. Is that, is that what you're asking, Solomon?
It's one council per school, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so for the high school, it says it should have at least one student representative.
Okay, I get what you're saying.
For the middle school, for the elementary schools, each of the schools, is that, is it possible to have a student representative on those? And I wouldn't suggest mandating that, but just clarify the wording so that.
I mean, as.
I'll certainly add to our discussion.
That would also change the wording at the second to last paragraph on the first page there.
I'm just gonna comment on that. I mean, I think you could have a discussion about it for the middle school. I would not vote for it for the elementary schools. I just wouldn't be in favor of a student representative on the school council or the elementary school, so.
Kristin?
I think, I think it, um, it's certainly permissible, allowable. It's, I think, it, the, the way the law is written, there, there has to be a student at the high school, is my understanding of the law, but not that, it's not mandating in other spaces, but it absolutely could happen.
So I had a question on this. Unless I missed it, it doesn't say how the members are elected. Was there any discussion about?
I think we're moving it up to individual schools. Otherwise, it's gonna get pretty, you take away some autonomy from the school.
Teacher and student members are elected by their peers.
It's elected.
It does speak to.
It does, okay, maybe I missed it.
Point A.
Okay. The exact method and what that means is up to each school. Okay, Solomon?
One other bit of punctuation in the very last paragraph, superintendent for approval, it's missing the period. First, line two, first sentence, has no period.
See who's still in courses and doing this work, which is good.
Right, I can just make the period. It's the double period.
Anything else on BDFA? Okay, moving on to BDFB, school improvement plan.
The only thing that's different here is that we split what was the previous policy into, that's the difference.
Any comments on BDFB? Okay, moving on to the next one, which is policy JH, students' absences, tardiness, and truancy.
May I? There are, as you'll note, quite a few changes in this, probably more than in any other policy that we brought forward. So I, I certainly would encourage you to look at these changes very, very carefully between now and the next time we look at it because you may find something. It's either, you know, mistakenly stated or may say something you don't think the policy should say. There's just a lot of changes here, so I think, keep careful with that.
So my question is on the language that adds the requirement for a healthcare provider's note after three days of being out with illness, and that appears to be new. I'm wondering where we got the three days, how we came up with that number.
That's historic, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't think it is new.
Oh, it's in bold, huh? That made me assume it was newer change.
I think this is part of a larger.
I, I can check for you, Rob, because I just, I am not aware of that being new, but I could check and see where that came from and get it back.
I just have medical questions about it, being a physician, because, okay, so my kindergartner has been out for two days with fever these last few days. She's still got a fever. She's probably gonna be out tomorrow. And I think as a parent and a physician, I, I don't really feel she needs a trip to the doctor, and I feel like that could be kind of onerous in terms of money and time for certain. And I'm not opposed to the idea of a day limit, but I'm wondering how we came up with three, because I kind of feel that lots of viral illnesses can sometimes go three days.
So that's the doctor, and it is true, I know.
And I have people come to my emergency room and saying, you know, I don't really need to be here, but I need a note to go back to school, or I need a note to go back to work, and I, I find that, in that case, it's.
I think, I think the latter is the origin, the genesis of the three days. It's a very much an employer number. That may be part of the reason why it's historical.
Yeah, we do, it's in our contract anyway.
Like I said, I'm not opposed to the number, but I think four or, four or five might make more sense to me than three, but that's just, I, I don't know, I'd like to, I don't have any hard data on that.
Yep. I'd be curious to know if the members of, may I? If members of the committee see a distinction that needs to be made between that number for elementary students and for secondary students. I don't know if, if that might be an issue of some sort, but there's just a lot to think about that and other things.
Catherine?
Yeah, and I also sort of wondered about the note from the physician versus a note from the parent. I mean, I'm thinking about, I have a lot of children and on any number of occasions, my kid has been sick at home for three or four days, if that's true, that, and I've spoken to the doctor on the phone, but I'm not necessarily taking them in and I've always written a note myself. So, I mean, you know, it would be somewhat of a burden for parents to have to go down to the doctor's office to pick up the note, even if they don't have their child or whatever, so. I'm able to think about.
Absolutely.
Debbie, then Solomon?
So I, I actually, I agree that three days, I think, is onerous, and I think it in fact, in fact encourages parents to send their kids back to school when maybe they're not quite ready. So they don't, you know, when you know they're not sick enough to go to the doctor, but they're really not well enough to come back to school. And is there a difference between high school and elementary? In my experience, there is, but I don't know that it needs to be delineated in the policy. You know, I'm not, I'm not sure that's really necessary for the policy.
I think, I think it is.
I, I think the difference is on the secondary level, particularly the high school, it's three absences or more than that, and you lose credit and it requires an appellate or appeal process. That's a huge difference in policy. Not so much policy, but an implementation of the policy.
But I think it's, I, I think it's worth exploring the numbers of days and seeing how that fits with the secondary, you know, attendance process. But also just think about what's reasonable, what are other school districts doing for a number of days? I think it's.
Solomon, who's next?
Well, actually, I can. I was gonna respond to that. Kip said, yeah, the three days and lose credit, though, that's three unexcused absences, correct? Not three excused absences. You don't lose credit for four excused absences.
No.
No.
It would only be excused at this point if you had a doctor's note.
Right, that's what we have to.
If someone's gone for seven days and the parent writes a note saying.
He was sick.
He was sick.
On the last paragraph on the first page, it says college visits, student trips, or school-sponsored field trips. And then later on, it says that these won't count towards loss of credit, but they're not under any of these five exceptions at the beginning. Do they, should we put an exception in the number six, these three things, or is that some other category?
We'll certainly look at it. I think that's, that's the kind of question that ultimately is answered by the committee as a whole, but we can certainly bring back, if, if the committee wants us to come back with that revision, we certainly could do that, and then the committee as a whole would vote on it. We don't, we don't make those, we try not to make those decisions for the committee.
So two things I'm hearing, you could use some feedback on. One is number of sick days. Do we have a sense of what? Well, Maria can talk to her staff about that and come back, but also, what do we think? Rob?
Just one suggestion might be to have something with a little bit more leeway for the administration. You could say something like, if a student is absent for, you could say three or more days or four more days due to illness, the administration may request a note from the healthcare provider. And then you could set a harder limit and say, if a student is absent five or six days in a row for illness, a note will be required. That's just one poss, I don't know, it's just a suggestion, like.
That's helpful, that's helpful language.
Like, we might request it from you, especially if a particular student has had problems.
If it's a pattern of absences.
But I think one of the reasons why we don't do that and have a policy is to remove arbitrariness. I, I hear what you're saying, but.
Yeah. No, I agree with that too. So I would say at least four, but that's.
No, that's helpful. And I will look into seeing what other districts do and I'll, I'll talk with people who I know have spent a lot of time with these topics and see what, what their senses, and I'll come back and you can share that. Yeah, I could do that. Yeah, Debbie reminds me. I can make sure I do that? No, it's not. I could have something by Monday. Sure, absolutely.
And then do we think we should add a number six, like Solomon suggested, to cover that last paragraph?
What I would wanna check, the only, oh, I'm sorry, I'm jumping in. The thing I'd like to check is that some of this goes by law, the attendance piece, and there are very specific reasons that you're exempt in terms of what's considered truancy, and I'm not sure. So I would just wanna check that. So I'm not opposed to, but I wanna make sure it's.
Wait, Solomon?
I think that the difference here in the, from the student's perspective is the mark of excused absence or unexcused absence, and that you'd like these things, college visits, exchanges, field trips, to be marked as excused, in which case I think they'd probably have to be one of these five things, but maybe not.
Certainly the practice at the high school, what it was when I was there was that any trip to, any college trip or related kind of absence was almost pro forma excused.
I think it is.
Yeah, it is still.
Go ahead, Debbie, then Kristin.
It does mention, under high school absences, there's a line that says, "School-sponsored field trips, exchange programs, and a limited number of college visits per year will not count toward the absence limit for class credit." So I, I know that's not exactly what you were saying, but it is addressed in some way.
My memory of our discussion was that, that these five were related to the law.
The law.
And we also recognize that, that the, the field trips and things like that should be excused. And so underneath the absences, you see by law, only the superintendent or his or her designated may excuse, excuse necessary absences for other causes. That's another cause that we're just kind of saying, you don't even have to ask about it.
Then I wouldn't recommend any change to that.
Oh, Rob?
I have another medical question. Under urgent medical or dental treatment, I assume that's state mandated, but that defines urgent, so what do students do for medical appointments?
I don't know how much they're excused at this moment, if it's not considered an urgent medical appointment.
Schedule them for after school?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, anything else?
That sounds like it's state mandated.
I believe the, I don't know that it's state mandated. I'm not sure. I won't speak to that one. I can do the five, but not.
I think the origins of what appears to be very, very strict rules about that has its origins in time and learning issues years ago. Making sure that kids, students are in school 180 days, 960 hours, whatever. And so I think, I think that's sort of the, the motivation behind that kind of limited wiggle.
There's also, you know, there's also the process of appealing to the, to the principal when you've exceeded days. So there is a process to go in and say, here's my reason why I needed to, and I want you to consider exempting me from that. So I think there's always that option, possibility.
So I only have one other question about this one, and it's the very last paragraph. If parents slash guardians choose to remove a student from school for an extended time, they will be required to withdraw the student and will be required to submit a home education plan. But what if they're not educating the student at home? What if there are other arrangements, or maybe this is just a technical legality that it's called that?
It's homeschool. So if you go on sabbatical and you take your child out for a month, for instance, instead of like arguing that that should be excused, you basically apply for a homeschooling application. You say, this is what's gonna happen while they're gone, and this is how we're going to, you know, create the educational plan and.
But, but I guess my point is, what if you're not homeschooling them? What if you're withdrawing them and putting them in another educational institution where, you know?
If it's, say you're going to another country and you're taking them for a month and they're going somewhere, it's, you could, you can choose to disenroll and re-enroll. Or you can say, I'm providing my child an experience by taking a couple of courses here. That would be more of a homeschool plan. But it's, it's trying to put some parameters around that students are required to go to school so many, you know, they're supposed to, so it's just giving options to, which has happened historically, at times where people have withdrawn their children for a prolonged period of time, but you have not provided any parameters around what the educational opportunities were for those, those kids during that period of time. Does that make any sense?
I'm just being nitpicky, but it seems like they have, you have two choices. You have to, you know, you're required to withdraw your student and you can either put them in another school or you can homeschool them. But you don't have to submit a home education plan if you're not homeschooling them. That's, I guess, my only point.
However, some people, when they homeschool, if, say, you're going on a trip and you're homeschooling, or even here, homeschooling, you may have your child enrolled in a course, but it does not constitute a full school day, and you still submit a homeschool plan. So kids who may go and take a course at, something at North Star or something else, that still constitutes a plan of how you're going to provide access to your child for an educational experience. Unless it's a, a school where they're, where they're enrolled, and you have to create that unique plan, whether it's home or abroad or wherever you may be.
Right. So I guess that's all I'm saying, is it should say something about you'd be required to enroll them in another school or submit.
Yes.
You don't have to homeschool them.
Oh, so you totally messed up, but yeah.
But I guess if you're enrolling them in another school, then this policy doesn't really even apply. It's not like a, an absence anymore. It's like you moved, then you moved back, you know? I guess that's just the way I look at it.
Some people do it for a semester or whatever.
Yeah, it's, it's ambiguous. I mean, we were in this situation where our children weren't, they were sort of exchange students. But they went to school every day, you know, it's. It can be ambiguous sometimes. So I think it's good to spell it out because I don't think parents always know what they're supposed to do.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kip, and the policy subcommittee doing great work. I really appreciate it.
Well, kudos to Kristen and Elaine and Deb.
Okay, moving on to calendar of upcoming meetings. So at the next meeting, which is February 28th, we actually vote on the final budget. And it looks like we'll be ready to have an analysis of administrative tasks and teacher evaluation. Preliminary information on. Any?
Yes. A question about the teacher evaluation. At our elementary school meeting the other night, Joan brought out this, this incredible stack of papers. I, I think it would be a good idea to bring that stack
Be happy to.
to the meeting, so that people can see the paperwork involved in this, because it's really truly onerous. And it's a good idea going back.
Yeah. I brought it to, if I may, I brought it to, you know, the stack to Pelham the other night in case we were going to talk about teacher evaluation, but I will bring this stack. And there's the potential for it to be very burdensome, however, there's also the potential to be very strategic about how you use supervision and evaluation to leverage improvement. And I think we have set ourselves up for, with collaborative teams, to be able to really think about team goal setting and showing progress in teams of their work, which will help us within the system. And also we are exploring, which we can talk more about by that point, different systems such as web-based programs like My Learn, uh, My Learning Plan? Which is a system that tracks the process of professional development. It is a, a request, an approval process for professional development and accrual of professional development points for relicensure. But it also has the, another component of teacher evaluation, so that it, it will take the forms, and you can have them put those forms within this process, which then helps you do walkthroughs, the documentation of rubrics. It also helps you to manage timelines, where I could print out and say, show me where X principal is in their timeline of, you know, completing the. So it is a lot of work, but we're looking at tools that can help us become more efficient and be more effective to, in this process. So I'm not being too frightened yet.
I know we can discuss this at the next round, but if you could also clarify, initially when this first came out, the way I read the regs was that veteran teachers would not need to be evaluated every year. Now I'm hearing that they are, they do have to be evaluated every year. Is that correct?
We will, we will definitely clarify. My understanding at this moment, again, scratching the surface, is that in the initial round. My understanding at this moment, again, scratching the surface, is that in the initial round, you have to say 50% of our staff will be evaluated regardless of their professional teaching status. In the next cycle, anyone who has proficient or exemplary can then go on to a different cycle. So I, but again, that's very cursory, you know, general information. What I plan to do for the committee is to have Beth and Kathy Mazer, who are owning this part of the world for implementation, to come and talk with us about that information. So we'll make sure that we do address those specific points.
That's the third interpretation.
There you go. And it's interesting because by September, we have to have this up and running.
Debbie?
Two thoughts. One, would it be okay if we had the 28th as a joint Pellam-region meeting so that Maria does not have to repeat everything on the 28th again?
I'd love that.
March 1st? Okay, so we can just post it that way. And then my second thought is, as I look, and I hesitate to say this, but I'm going to say it anyway, as I look toward March and April, can we think about maybe in the later spring, summer months, not doing two meetings a month and maybe combining these into one meeting per month? I mean, I understand during the fall and during budget season, it makes a lot of sense, but I'm not sure we need it year-round.
I think that'd be great. And we also will look at this calendar more, I mean, we have some things slated out, but we will, as topics come up that people really want us to address, we'll make sure that we fill in those topics.
Catherine?
Yeah, on that note, I was wondering, I don't see it here. And I've been to the late start forums, two or three late start forums, and in my case, talked about sometime in late March coming in. So I was just wondering if you had some thought about when that might be.
Yeah.
We'll discuss it again in a minute.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we didn't update that. I apologize. So I'll make sure I add that it would be, I need to speak with Mike, but most likely we'll have to do the, probably one of the later, probably the last meeting in March, which would be the 27th. I think that allows us enough time to really do the work. If he's ready to come forward on the 13th, we can, that's fine as well.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'll take motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Any discussion? All of us in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.